This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for October 19th, 2020. In accordance with social distancing requirements, Governor Pritzker's Executive Orders 2020-43 and 2020-44 in Section 7E of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, this meeting will be held virtually. Persons wishing to provide public comment are strongly encouraged to submit written comments via email at info@warrenville-il.us. And a reminder that this meeting is being recorded. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Vavir.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Chrisell.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Bremel.
Here.
Treasurer Brenner.
Here.
City Attorney Lenaman.
Here.
City Administrator Coakley.
Here.
Assistant City Administrator White.
Here.
Police Chief Tarano.
Here.
Finance Director Dollstrand.
Here.
Community and Economic Development Director Menzer.
Here.
Deputy Public Works Director Phil Kukler.
Here.
All present. Thank you, Emily. We'll now say the Pledge of Allegiance allowed here, folks that are in the chambers with me, I invite you to say it along silently at home. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We will begin this evening's meeting with a presentation from Lauterbach and Amon. Mr. Brad Porter is with us to give us the update on our 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Brad, over to you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brad Porter. I am here on behalf of Lauterbach and Amon as the city's financial statement audit manager to present to you the results from our fiscal year 2020 year-end audit cycle. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to remote in as we navigate these very difficult circumstances. I want to make sure that you know we are absolutely here as a resource for all financial-related questions or matters that may come up during this difficult time. So, and before I go any further, I certainly feel the need to thank those that played an integral role in this audit process. So Kevin Leo and the finance team did a tremendous job this year, and we're very appreciative of all the time and effort that they expended during this process. This year was very difficult, to say the least, given the circumstances that we're all dealt, but nonetheless, staff really placed this audit a priority, and we were able to meet all necessary deadlines to get this audit to the finish line. So, thank you very much, Kevin, Leo, and to the finance team. As part of the completion of our audit cycle, there are going to be two documents specifically that I referenced throughout my presentation this evening. The first of which is a three-page letter, which is known in the industry as a SaaS 114 letter. So that should look something like this. It is a three-page document that can be obtained electronically if that was not part of your board packet, but ultimately, this letter states that we believe there were no disagreements or difficulties that we had encountered throughout our audit cycle. And that is in accordance with Statement on Auditing Standard Number 114. Moving on to the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, that should have the city's logo here. I'm going to reference some intangibles and tangibles throughout this audit document this evening, and I'd like to start on page 11. So if I could please have you turn your paper or electronic copies to page 11 of the audit You should see what appears to be an award, and that is certainly what this is. This is your Certificate of Achievement Award that was issued by the Government Finance Officers Association and represents the highest level of financial reporting excellence that an entity can receive in the governmental accounting world. So in addition to an entirely, an entire section in the back of this audit report, there's an additional time burden that is placed on staff to achieve a number of different reporting requirements that are also included with throughout this audit report. So again, it represents the highest form of financial reporting excellence. We'll be working hand-in-hand with the finance team on the application for the fiscal year 2020 audit report as well. If I can please have you turn the page to page 12, you should find our Lauterbach and Amon letterhead here. Page 12 is what we title our Independent Auditor's Report. So in addition to stating your responsibility as management, which is ultimately prepare and provide the financial statements to us, your auditors, we also state what our responsibility is over these financial statements, and that is to generate an opinion over the financial statements. I'm very happy to report, you will see in the bottom of page 12, the opinions paragraph, that we have issued an unmodified opinion for fiscal year 2020, which is the cleanest form of opinion that a governmental entity can receive, and states that we, the financial statements are free from any material misstatement, and that there are sound internal controls in place over the multiple internal control functions of the city. So kudos to everybody involved in the audit process. I know since I've been manager, it has been nothing but certificate of achievements and clean audit opinions, so let's keep that up moving into the future. Please turn with me to page 14. Now, this is oftentimes what I deem the most important section within your audit report, because as a board, we are certainly in tune with these financial statements that lie behind the section or not oftentimes the easiest to interpret and understand. So this section here is going to give you the greatest understanding of some of the financial highlights for fiscal year 2020, and I will certainly encourage, encourage, encourage you as a board to read through this section in detail. You're going to walk away with a much better depiction of some of the financial highlights for fiscal year 2020. It has a lot of great information, a lot of great narrative that is ultimately put together by management, and they did a great job of explaining some of the fluctuations from one year to the next. So please, please read through this. Moving on, if I could please have you turn to page 41, I'm now going to touch on a couple of different financial highlights for fiscal year 2020. Page 41 is your general funds income statement, as well as your other governmental funds, but for the sake of my presentation this evening, I'm going to be sticking to a couple of the key operating funds of the city. So page 41, you will see about midway through the page that there was an excess deficiency of revenues over expenditures, or in this case, under expenditures, of $224,220 for fiscal year 2020. This figure is essentially your income or loss from operations. Now, it's rather deceiving, given that the city had budgeted a deficit for the general fund this year of $3.4 million. So in the scheme of things, it is very, very clear that multiple departments were able to control expenditure costs, and that revenues came in significantly over budget this year. You know, COVID ultimately not really having its toll until the months of March and April. So we did still have 10, you know, normal months per se. So I wanted to point out that revenues had a positive budget variance this year of $1.4 million, and expenditures had a positive variance as well of $1.8 million. So again, a great job all around in terms of controlling costs. I would also like to point out on page 46, you will find your water and sewer funds income statement. And the third line up from the bottom there on page 46 is your change in net position, which is ultimately the increase in this fund's fund balance. So for fiscal year 2020, we had a positive increase of approximately $493,000 in the water and sewer fund, or 2.3%. I would also like to touch on the notes to the financial statements. Now, we may be here quite some time if I read through these in detail, but I did want to at least provide the board with some insight of what types of important information could be found within each of these footnotes. So Note 1 is going to provide you with a lot of the summary of our accounting policies. Governmental accounting is certainly its own beast, and certain transactions are recorded for, in certain manners, and that reading through Note 1 will give you some insight as to why or how certain things are treated in the governmental accounting world. So certainly refer to that regarding any questions along those lines. Note 2 is simply going to provide you with some information regarding the city's budget process. Note 3 is going to have all of your information regarding your deposit balances, capital asset balances, and long-term debt. And Note 4, which we title Other Information, I think it would be more suited as your pension funds, but ultimately, well, this is going to provide you with a lot of information regarding your IMRF, other post-employment retiree health plans, and your police pension plans. A lot of the actuarial assumptions that were used can be found within this footnote, as well as some schedules in the back regarding detailing the funding contributions made for this year. So kind of on that same topic, I would like to draw your attention to page 79, please. On page 79, you're going to find your Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund detail, and it's certainly worth noting, so IMRF ultimately measures their plans on the calendar year. It's not in tune with your fiscal year, so keep that in mind, but ultimately, the city's net pension liability had declined from $2.6 million at December 31st, 2018, down to $1.2 million as of December 31st, 2019. So ultimately, the primary attributable factor to that was that IMRF had a very sound year in terms of investment income on their plan assets. So we were seeing that quite, you know, widespread across the industry. IMRF had a great year in terms of return. So that certainly paid dividends on that, you know, over 50% decline in your IMRF net pension liability. So despite this being a point-in-time calculation, I would just encourage the city to continue funding IMRF in accordance with their employer-defined rate. So moving on to page 94, this is the last item that I'd like to cover within the audit report itself. Page 94 is in regards to your police pension fund. So on the right-hand column of page 95, you will see the information for fiscal year And ultimately, this is a calculation of how your net pension liability is calculated, and you will see there are a number of different factors that go into this figure, but your employer net pension liability at April 30th, 2020, was just over $11 million, which was a rather significant increase over the prior year, but certainly in terms of returns on the police pension funds assets due to market conditions in the months of March and April, we did have a pretty significant decline. You know, IMRF's plan assets are measured on the calendar year, whereas your Gatsby 67, 68 police pension fund liability is calculated on your fiscal year's return. So we did see a pretty significant dip in overall investment income for the year, which was a primary factor in the increase in your police pension fund liability for the year. But nonetheless, we still are hovering around that, you know, 67% funded as of 4/30/2020, whereas last year we were at 72%. So not too significant of a decline, but certainly something to monitor and continue either meeting or exceeding the actuaries' recommended contributions, and we'll see that number kind of change course. So that concludes my coverage of the audit report. I would be happy to field any questions that you may have for me.
Thank you, Brad. Overall, that sounded very positive, and we're continuing on the same track that we've established in past years, which is very encouraging. The green light's on. I didn't get any warnings that no one could hear me. Brad, you can hear me, right?
I sure can, yes.
Okay. We'll go, we'll go to the Alderman then, and see if they have comments or questions for our presenter, beginning with Alderman Ashauer.
No questions. Thank you for the excellent report.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry.
Yes, thank you for the report, and I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Vavir.
Thank you very much for your report, and I have no comments.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos.
Yeah, this was great to read through. As much, yeah, it was more positive than I thought it was going to be. So I know the big, next year will be a little different, but this was good to, it gives me a positive feeling to be starting next fiscal year with this behind us, and it does look good. And thank you very much. I appreciate the detail.
Thank you.
Alderman Goodman.
Yeah, first off, I want to second what Mr. Porter said about thanking staff for their hard work on putting this together, especially during the pandemic and having to work remotely for quite a lot of this. So thank you to Finance Director Dollstrand and his staff. I guess my question for you, Mr. Porter, just to begin with, is having to work remotely, I know that there are a lot of challenges and certainly time issues involved in that, time spent. Are there any additional risks that we should note as a result of this change? And do you think going forward, you know, audits will be conducted in this manner when we don't have to do them this way? I wouldn't think so.
That is a fantastic question, and I do feel like the nature of our audits may change a little bit moving forward, but I think it all comes down to, at the end of the day, you know, we're all people, and we kind of need that human interaction to be able to really get the job done. So we were fortunate enough where we were still able to come out on-site at the city for a couple of days while obviously maintaining all the appropriate protocols and making sure that we're remaining compliant in that regard. So, yeah, we were certainly very fortunate. We have a great team over there at the city that was, you know, emailing us left and right, uploading items to our client portal, and it really worked out tremendously well. And I will tell you, you know, we're having some clients where that is not the case. So I'm happy to report that the city did a great job in that regard.
Okay, that's wonderful. I know there are all sorts of concerns about data security and privacy, not to mention, you know, just from remote monitoring of people who are dealing with our money always involves additional risk to some degree. So this snapshot feels maybe a little bit more out of date than the audit usually does at this time of year when we're looking it over, because of this year's extraordinary volatility, as I know you referenced. So in your opinion, and maybe comparing us a little bit to other communities that you're familiar with, are there any of this report's conclusions that are most likely to have changed since April 30th in a significant way that we need to be aware of or be thinking about right now?
Well, you used a great term, and that's volatile. So I think when we think of volatility, we think about the market naturally, right? And so I think in terms of the market, it's definitely had its ups and downs, but fortunately enough, I think as it relates to your actuary plans and things of that nature, the actuaries do take into consideration all those, the potential for, you know, certain pandemics and whatnot. So I think you're just as interested as I am in terms of what that's going to do to a lot of the actuarial valuation figures, and unfortunately, you know, that data is kind of unavailable at this point as the actuaries work to run their numbers. But in terms of significant changes, there wouldn't be anything that I would necessarily be in tune with. I'm sure we're probably going to see, you know, a decline in some of your revenue streams, as I'm sure you're probably already aware of. I would anticipate that the city is working to control all and, you know, all costs where possible. So I think, you know, in terms of activity post-fiscal year-end, I wouldn't be, you know, too in tune with anything that would have changed drastically.
Sure, and we're going to talk a little bit later about the city's current financial condition. I guess I meant more big picture, when you do an audit report, it sort of necessarily has to be done several months after the fact. There's no getting around that, that's just how long these things take. But because we're looking back on something that, I'm sorry, feels like 100 years ago in some respects, it makes me wonder whether spending a lot of time going into the nitty-gritty of something out of date is giving us a false picture of the city's financial condition in any way.
I certainly understand your concerns, but in that regard, I, you know, I can't speak too much on some of the activity that has happened from the months of May through October at this point. But what I will tell you is it was very clear that the city had a good capital plan, and some of those measures that probably prevented some significant deficits from occurring. It's certainly clear that the city, even just in the months of March and April, took the appropriate course of actions where they could.
Okay, now that's good to hear. Let's see. I guess my only other question was just on the item that you mentioned last, or talking about the drop in the police pension fund is something that we need to continue to monitor. I know in the past, when we've had the audit report every year, one thing we often hear from our auditors is that we're doing very well relative to a lot of other communities that they're working with, and you can kind of see over the last five or six years, or just on this page, it sort of tells the story that we've gradually, in a pretty steady way, not entirely, but in a pretty steady way, have been increasing our liability as a percentage of covered payroll coverage. So the question is, this is a big drop, this puts us back about, you know, five years' worth of progress. Would you, as previous auditors giving us this report, continue to say that we're doing well relative to other communities, or is this moving us back closer to where other people who weren't doing so well are?
I would certainly say you're doing well in comparison to other municipalities. One thing that was obvious to me, that caught my eye, was the fact that this was the first year that the city did not meet their actuary-determined calculation or calculated contribution amount this year. So on page 91, you'll see the actuaries have recommended a police pension funding contribution figure of a little bit more than $972,000. I'll give you a second to turn to that page.
I see it.
Yep, so this was the first year, at least since fiscal year 2015, in which the true contribution to the pension fund came in at less than what the actuary had recommended. So, you know, in theory, that would have a negative impact on your overall, you know, pension-funded percentage, but again, we are seeing a number of municipalities, especially with some of the challenges recently, kind of cut back on their police pension funding contributions. So all in all, I would say the city is still in a good position from a pension funding standpoint, but it, you know, it never hurts to be better, right?
Okay, so I guess my question for staff about that, to follow up on that then, is, you know, was that our intention, and how does that compare to the city's plan?
Finance Director Dollstrand.
So the difference between our actuarial determined contributions and what we actually contributed in the end is really a product of the collections of property taxes that are done at the county level. The collections did fall short of our actuarial determination and our levy, and that the collection part is a little bit beyond our control, is that we can't control when people actually remit that money. So at this point, it would be our hope that in the coming year or years, we should see some past collections of the amounts that were not paid into the property taxes the way they were supposed to be, and we reflected in a future audit report.
Yeah. If I can please add, like, ultimately, you know, the city did meet 98% of that actuary recommended contribution amount. So it's not like, as Finance Director Dollstrand stated, he is exactly right, it is a product of the collections, and it certainly wasn't the city's intent. So I think there are significantly more actuarial assumptions and some more underlying factors that caused that percent funded to decline a little bit than just the $23,000 short of the recommended contribution. So that's, I guess that's ultimately my basis for the, you know, the lack of concern in that regard, and I know it was a conversation point while we were on-site for field work as well.
Sure, and when we're talking about $11,023,000 isn't a lot. I understand that. Thank you very much for your time, and this helps make a lot of this report very clear and easy to understand, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Chrisell.
Thank you, Mayor. No questions. I would just like to also add that thank you very much for the very comprehensive report. I think it was easy to, as Alderman Goodman said, understand and then follow along. So I appreciate all the work that went into getting this done, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Widener.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no questions, and I express appreciation for all involved with the excellent report, and I hope next year provides us with the same good news.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
Just my comment to the department and all the good work that they did to get us to where we are today. Thank you very much for that report.
Thank you, Alderman. And it's reassuring to know that we do everything according to HOIL, we do it by the book, and we do it very well, and staff certainly deserves all the kudos they're getting for their hard work to maintain year after year after year, the high standard of reporting that we've established early on. So Brad, thanks for taking an outside look at what we're doing internally and giving us head nod, saying we're doing it right. That's appreciated.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for the time this evening.
Thanks for coming in.
No problem. Take care.
Thank you, Brad.
No problem.
All right, we'll move on to the portion of our meeting set aside for citizens' comments. We have one person in the audience this evening that wishes to speak. We'll give him first shot at things, and then we'll go to email comments or anybody on the phone. So please come to the podium and introduce yourself. I think you know the drill.
The TIF statute establishes a TIF technical committee, which includes representatives from all the taxing districts, and a citizen's representative. About four years ago, the citizen representative from TIF III invited Mike Hoffman and me to his house on Batavia Road for coffee and discussion. He stated that his goal was to sell his property. I agree that I supported private property and the owner's freedom to his own choice, but I also support the protection of the taxpayers. This individual and his home are now gone from Batavia Road. He ceased attending the TIF meetings once his property was sold. We might ask why a citizen's representative was included in the TIF technical committee? Believe the answer is very simple. It is ultimately the taxpayers that are affected by the redirection of the tax revenue by the TIF. The following are just a few examples in TIF III. Warrenville Fire Department, increased population, increased expense, no new revenue. Warrenville Park District, increased population, increased expense, no new revenue. Existing residential properties in TIF III, increased TIF tax. Example, a 90-year-old house on Ray Street that has paid $1,000 in increased TIF taxes in the last two years. The Earhart subdivision. Mr. Earhart told me that he does not know if his subdivision will produce the amount of revenue, TIF revenue, that the city is looking for. If it fails to produce this, there will be a financial shortfall in the payback of what the city owes the capital and the sewer and water funds. Since it appears that there is no citizen representative on the TIF technical committee, who will protect the taxpayers and address the current and future issues in TIF III?
Thank you, Bob. And remember that you don't have to go back through City Hall when you leave, you can go out the side door. Do we have any email comments for this evening? None, and anyone on the phone that wishes to comment? Doesn't appear to be anybody there either. Okay, thank you very much. That's conclusion of our ability for citizens' comments for this evening, and there won't be another opportunity for public comment. be another opportunity for public comment at this meeting. We'll move on to official and staff comments. I have a couple of things for this evening of interest. One is the trick-or-treat hours. That's, of course, coming up pretty quick. Just a reminder that the city has established the October 31st trick-or-treat hours of 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM for Halloween. You can see the city's website for more information, and please take into consideration the Illinois Department of Public Health's recommendations for Halloween festivities guidance for celebrating this year. Also, COVID-19. DuPage County has experienced a rise in COVID-19 activity. Residents are strongly encouraged to continue to follow personal protective measures for the prevention and spread of COVID-19 by wearing a mask in public, washing hands, and maintaining a safe social distance from people outside your household. And remember, stay home when you feel sick. It's very important to stay focused on working together as a community to slow the spread of the virus and keep our friends, loved ones, and neighbors safe. We can't let COVID fatigue set in and make us careless, so please, please, stay safe and stay healthy and be a good neighbor and a good family member. We'll move on to the clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Just another reminder that the 2021 consolidated election packets are available now at City Hall, and you were able to pick them up and could start circulating nomination petitions on the 22nd of September. So some of you, I'm sure, have started that. The filing is December the 14th for the first day, ending on the 21st. And the packets, as I said, are available at City Hall and also on the city's webpage. And then another reminder that there is early voting at the Courtyard Restaurant on Route 59. I went today, and I was in and out in five minutes. There was two people in front of me, and it was the easiest thing ever. So you can vote right here in town. You have no excuse not to vote. It's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Treasurer.
Nothing to add.
Thank you. We'll go to the Alderman. Alderman Ashauer.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Berry.
I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bavir.
Yeah, I listened to the meeting for the McRoe path the other night when it was on, and a question there, the engineer was saying that the bridge was built in the 50s, and I do have the plans from DuPage County Highway Department from 1978 when it was reconstructed. So I'd like to get that verified or updated to the plans. And I did send them to, about a year ago, to Community Development Department, and I'd just like to find out if they could change the date on that.
Okay, I'm sure they're listening. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davalos.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd just like to say thank you in these challenging COVID times for city staff and the police and everyone that's worked together to get information to the Alderman so that we don't have to come in as often, and I'm just very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that between now and our next meeting on November 2nd, so starting November 1st, open enrollment is available for anyone who might be in need of health insurance through healthcare.gov. That will be open for a period of six weeks, I think through December 15th. So for anyone who might be having difficulty during these pandemic days and not able to access healthcare, the open enrollment period is starting very soon. There are some subsidies available if you're eligible, so you can fill out an application on healthcare.gov starting November 1st, and then shop for your plan and get health insurance. I think in the past three years, I believe I read that a couple of million people in the United States have lost health insurance overall. So I think more information needs to be put out there to let people know when these periods are open so that they're aware of the resources that they have available to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Crishell.
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Widener.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no comments.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
No comments.
Thank you. We'll move on then to City Administrator Cokely.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just reemphasize a couple of things you were referring to earlier or talking about with the COVID issues. Again, on Monday morning, I'm part of a conference call with other DuPage County municipal officials and DuPage County Health Department, and they were, they're very phlegmatic, even keeled folks for what they're going through. It's amazing, and they do amazing work, but they were just reemphasizing and asking all of us, other leaders in the county, in the communities, to remind everyone to keep following all of the protocols the mayor mentioned, washing your hands, social distance, wearing masks. It's extremely important. Our numbers are going up very rapidly, not like other states around us, but I just read an article, it was either Tribune or Cranes before the meeting, that Region 8, which is DuPage and King County, is actually one of the higher suburban positivity rates. Those things all come from the number of people that positive, test positively for the number tested. We're going up in hospitalizations, and sadly, we're also going up with the number of deaths in our county, in our region. So it is extremely important. These are all people that we probably know, and we want to protect everyone, just as the mayor is saying, ourselves, our friends, our family, our coworkers, our loved ones, our neighbors, even people who don't know. But another important point, I've said this before, is this is very likely going to affect our economy again. If you've been paying attention to what goes on around the state and the metro east area down by St. Louis on the Illinois side, down in Will County area around Joliet, up by Rockford from DeKalb all the way, there's a huge North Region. They've all had more restrictions put on restaurants and bars and gatherings. It is, I think, now probable, the governor was quoted today morning or advising, and he always gives a little hint of what's coming, that there's going to be some more restrictions in suburban areas, and we are a target for those. We can't change what has already happened, but everyone just redouble our efforts, and please share that information wherever you can. There's a lot of information on the city's website, on the DuPage County Health Department site, and on the Illinois Department of Public Health sites to give reminders, information. I'm as fatigued about this whole situation as anybody, but we've got to just keep on going and stay the course. We don't want to get further shutdowns because I got to manage the city's budget, which is not that easy, but luckily I don't run my own business, which I feel for those folks. So anyway, we will get through this. There will be an end. We're farther towards that end than we were. We just don't know when it is. We got to stay the course. Thank you.
Thank you, John. City Attorney Lenaman.
No report for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. We'll move on then to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Could I have a motion, please? Alderman Widener.
Certainly. I move to approve the agenda for the October 19th, 2020 City Council regular meeting.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
Motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
No changes.
Oh, yeah, is there any, are there any changes or comments on the agenda as presented? Okay. Hearing none. Okay. Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Crishell.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Emily. The agenda as presented has been approved. We have two sets of minutes that need approval also this evening. Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
I approve, I move to approve the minutes of the October 5th, 2020 City Council regular meeting and move to approve the minutes of the October 12th, 2020 Public Works and Infrastructure Committee regular meeting.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Crishell.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Thank you. The minutes are approved as presented. The consent agenda for this evening. Item 6A, accept Mayor Bremel's recommendation and pass Resolution R2020-62, extending the duration of the March 16th, 2020 Declaration of Emergency until the adjournment of the next regular, special, or emergency meeting of the City Council. B, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and approve Resolution R2020-63, authorizing staff to apply for the ITAP grant and pledging to provide the city funds necessary for the local share of the Route 59 multi-use paths project. C, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and assign Alderman Widener and Crishell to work with staff to review and update the capital maintenance and replacement plan and develop recommendations for City Council consideration. D, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and direct staff to implement a sewer and water incentive program, discounting the surcharge fees for the future sewer and water connections by 50% effective immediately and ending on December 31st, 2023. E, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and adapt the Safety Committee's safe lifting policy effective immediately. F, accept Mayor Bremel's recommendation and approve the appointment of Philip Everson to fill a commissioner vacancy on the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission for a three-year term set to expire April 30th, 2022. G, receive and file FY 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. H, receive and file reported invoices paid up to October 14th, 2020 in the amount of I authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before November 2nd, 2020 in the amount of $123,012.12. And J, receive and file a report of master debit card expenditures for the month of September 2020 in the amount of $6,457.53. May I have a motion?
Alderman Widener moves to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Bremel.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
Motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Crishell.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been approved for the evening. We'll move on to the regular agenda. We have one item this evening, when someone would like to make a motion so we can have discussion.
Alderman Davalos. I'd like to move to accept staff recommendation, wait second reading, and pass ordinance 02, or O2, 020-36, approving variations from the sign ordinance of the city of Warrenville to allow 370 square foot, comma, 12-foot tall real estate signs for Everton subdivision.
Second.
Second. Alderman Berry.
All right, good. We have a motion and a second. Could we have Community and Economic Development Director Ron Menster give us a little background on this item, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted just to take a quick moment to recognize the fact that the ordinance that's including the agenda packet backup for this item does not specifically follow and reflect all the direction provided by the City Council at the last meeting. Specifically, the council had provided direction that they were comfortable with the possibility of having the offsite real estate marketing sign that was proposed by or requested by MI Homes to be located at the northeast corner of the Route 59 Duke Parkway Everton Drive intersection, moved to the southeast corner of that same intersection when the northeast corner was developed with a new commercial use and just prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for that use, whenever that might be. After last, the last City Council meeting, staff and the attorney had a number of discussions. We reviewed the application materials submitted by MI Homes and the public notice that was ultimately published for their variation requests and noted that the property at the southeast corner of the intersection was not included in their application and therefore not included in the public notice. So from a staff and attorney perspective, we determined that it wouldn't really be appropriate for the City Council, or for the city for that matter, to approve a variance to allow a sign on a piece of property that was not covered under the application materials or the public notice. We have informed the applicant of this. Essentially, if they do want to move forward with relocating the sign to the southeast corner of that intersection at some point in time in the future, they would need to make a new application and go through a new public hearing process, and the applicant is aware of that. Other than that, the ordinance does reflect all the other direction that was provided by the City Council.
Thank you, Ron. We'll go to discussion by the Alderman at this point then. Alderman Ashauer.
No questions.
Thank you, Alderman Berry.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bavir.
No questions.
Thank you, Alderman Davalos.
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Alderman Goodman.
No additional questions.
Thank you, Alderman Crishell.
No questions. Thank you.
Alderman Widener.
No questions.
Thank you, and Alderman Wilson.
No questions.
Okay, we have no comments or questions from the Alderman, so we have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Crishell.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go on to item 7B, the FY 2021 Financial Update and Discussion, beginning with City Administrator John Cokely. John?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of comments, and then Kevin will fill in the details and, as always, correct anything I might say that could be incorrect or not exactly precise. Luckily, that's not too often. Anyway, as promised, we're making the reports each month, the second council meeting of the month. As you will note in the report, there's a lot of information about slight increases. You could walk away looking at it and saying, you know, some things are slightly better than some of the other than we had projected or predicted. I want to point out, though, and I, I'm not known for super positivity, but I feel like I'm even taking a new level of, of, I was called Mr. Doom and Gloom by one of the unions recently, so I'll wear that with pride, I guess. It's a realistic picture. We're measuring against things that were going to look really bad, and now they're a little bit less bad. Our revenues are, you know, we're, we're paying the bills, and we're staying open, and we've got money to get through the year because we've done some things. The City Council staff is working to keep costs down and, and do our best and, well, support the businesses as well to help keep them open so they can help us since we help them. But we still are down in revenue. This isn't a glowing picture of, gee, everything's fine and, and we're back to normal. I don't know when that will ever happen again, but at the time being, we are down. We are doing things to still conserve cash and do what we can to keep things going. And I don't mean to be super negative there. We can sustain our operations and all through the end of this fiscal year, and we are just starting to plan for the next fiscal year, which is a challenge. We can't use trend analysis for much. We have to We have to start doing our best to project where things will be. That will be a lot of work and effort. It's getting a little beyond the report tonight, but you do see where we are. Our finance folks, Kevin is doing a really good job of keeping up with what the picture is at present, but it's just a snapshot of where we are currently. And as we started the meeting, we don't know if we're going to have more. I think we're going to have some more shutdowns. It'll be a tap down. It won't be a complete closure from what we can see, which is good news. But everything that limits our businesses locally and in the region does reduce what we may have coming in the future. So if you've got a good report here on what we are in the current situation, and it's, to quote Kevin, "It's less bad than we thought it would be," but there's still not a great picture that we have coming. So I wish I had better news. Someday we will have good news again. Again, we will, things will be changing. We will get used to new normals and adapt. And at some point, there will be a vaccine and we will be able to go back to things in a more normal way and money will return and revenues will return, but at the current time, that's not the situation. So maybe Kevin can give us more positive news.
Kevin, on that note?
The pressure's on.
There we go. Sorry about that. There was, there was a little bit of improvements from a month ago, about $103,000 or so. And I'm not going to be all that optimistic at this point either. I mean, we do have a little bit of a better picture than we had, but, but remember that this was prepared a week ago and it was prepared before any of the new increase in cases that have occurred and any future things that may happen, which will obviously have an impact on what we, what we're able to project going forward. We do have a little bit of help, particularly in the Capital Maintenance and Replacement Fund. The Thorntons Station actually started to remit the local motor fuel tax, which we did receive the first remittance of that today, so that's going to be a little bit of help. It's certainly not going to solve everything we have in that fund, but it, but every little bit we get is going to help in there. The general fund, as you see in there, had about $100,000 improvement. And there's been a little bit of improvement in the area of the food and beverage tax. The really nice performer so far has been the state shared income tax, averaging well over 100% right now of our original estimates. Who's to say if that'll hold or not? It's been averaging about 126%. So that's doing well so far. The sales tax issues are going to continue for a while and that certainly will be impacted if there are any more sort of tamp downs of what the businesses in town are able to do. So we're looking up a little bit from where we were. Again, we've got a long way to go and like the administrator said, we will get through all this. And I'd like to thank the staff. They've been working extremely hard on identifying those expenditures which we do not need to incur or which can be delayed. Those were added on page five of the report. Some of the larger ones listed in there. In fact, the Capital Maintenance and Replacement Fund. So I just wanted to point out that staff is continually looking for ways to not spend and to maintain what we have that allows to keep meeting our operational expenses. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. We certainly appreciate those efforts. And City Administrator Coakley, has additional comments?
Yes, thank you. As Kevin was talking, he reminded me of two things that are important. As the city, the Aldermen aren't involved yet, we will be presenting information to give budget input in the near future. But as staff is beginning the budget process, there's some things that I'm mindful of. Illinois Municipal League has reminded all the municipalities. I don't want this to come across in any way as any kind of a political commentary on a referendum or a ballot initiative, but the governor had, I don't know if "promise" is the right word, but if the, there's the whole fair tax thing on the, on the income tax issue on the ballot. And I don't care personally how people vote. It's up to you. But the governor had vowed that if that does not pass, there will be other cuts to our revenues is the only reason I'm bringing it up. We need to pay attention to that. I don't know what's going to happen with that initiative, and they may well take more of the LGDF funding or some other things. Secondly, it's very important that we keep in mind that while Kevin's got all the information on what's happening in each fund, the hotel tax fund has been a source of revenue for other funds and subsidizing those. And I want to keep everyone, including our senior staff and the Alderman cognizant of the fact, it's unlikely to have much. We can do probably, I don't want to get ahead of the council on these decisions. Those are years to make. Probably do some funding of events next year, but there will be dramatically less money to use to subsidize things like extra pension fund payments, general fund, capital improvements fund. So it's another factor, the inter-fund transfers we're paying attention to as well. Again, I don't have Rosie's information. You can see what's happening with that fund in itself. But I want to remind everyone that has been a source of revenue that we use. There's fund balances still. We have, we have been fortunate to have good reserves and built those up over many years, of many years of hard work by everyone. We're using those and we will have more data coming about how much and what's going on with those things now that the audit's out and we can dig into those numbers more. But I want to point those things out because the budget season is starting. It's not just month to month of what we're looking at right now. We have to be looking into fiscal year '22, which is a long way off and not so far off from this point. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We'll go to the Alderman for comments or questions on the discussion at hand here. Alderman Ashauer?
No questions. I appreciate the update. I like the good news.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry?
Yes, this was very informative. It's easy to read. I like it when you, you know, instead of just, you know, pages of numbers, it's, it's well explained. It's sad to see what's happening with our hotels and it's also sad to see what's happening with the amusement tax, the regal theater closing, and I hope we don't have any issues with, with the restaurants. I like it because I do go to the restaurants in Warrenville. I do eat inside and I'm not afraid to do so. And, and there's quite a few people that do eat there. And hopefully, at least people in town are going to our local restaurants. They seem to be busy, which is good. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Bavir?
Thank you for the update and no questions at this time.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to express my feelings of hope. And a lot of it is resting on my faith and trust in our staff. And I'm just so impressed with different ideas they have thought of, different ways they're being creative, different ways they're being conservative, and most important, I think to me, is the way they're being so transparent to the council. And we are going over this periodically quite often. And I think that transparency is, at least in my point of view, allowing us to make good policy choices and decisions going ahead, because this will, it will be over, but it will last for a while. So we're all kind of tied here together and I guess I'll just have some sort of faith in the system and how we're going forward, and I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
Thank you. I appreciate the update. I have a couple of questions, mostly focusing on the financial update that was in the weekly report and how that sort of connects to some of the coronavirus specific update. I know that there's a memo from Kevin on October 10th and a different one from October 14th. These memos are both about our financial updates, but one is just a quarterly update and the one from 14th is specific to pandemic impacts. So when I look through this quarterly update, I think the graphs are really helpful, especially when people are trying to look at changes to the funds over time. And if you just look through some of the attachments, you can spot, you know, how the food and beverage tax has been flat for a year and a half and it's now dropping. Or how the amusement tax, you know, was flat and then continues to drop. Or the hotel motel tax was maybe dropping slightly and is now dropping dramatically. So you look at some of the shape of these curves, even the motor fuel tax just sort of slight downward inching over time. Not that those are numbers that are as large as some of these others. Income taxes tend to be a more complicated picture, and in particular, when you look at some of the sort of short-term payments and deductions from past years, it can make these graphs a little bit harder to read in a way that's, that's useful for sort of looking at our revenues during the pandemic. But I know that when we've done the projections and we've sort of looked at this, every time we've done an update on the coronavirus pandemic, one thing that staff has sort of incorporated into and baked into our projections is sort of an initial hit, but then gradual increases over time. So you might say, okay, in month one, we think we'll get 50% of revenue from whatever the revenue might be, and then we're inching upward, 55, 60, 65. But given these graphs and given, you know, what our actual lived experience has been now for seven months, and we see these revenue numbers that continue to decrease, that have been continuing to decrease, pretty straight line decreases for hotel motel, for food and beverage tax, sales tax, motor fuel, amusement. And I think amusement is going to have some more steep decreases that aren't captured on any of these graphs because now the movie theater has actually closed, as has been mentioned. So I guess my question is, if those previous projections sort of anticipated increases gradually over time, and we all thought that this would be over faster and we all certainly hoped that we'd be in a steeper period of recovery now than we are, what, what do our projections in the next six months look like? Because when, when you see in this table and it's sort of, you know, filled up with actual figures for the revenue loss estimations that you've included in the October 14th memo, I guess it's not so clear to me whether the pattern that we were trying to predict before, as we move from October into the final six-month period, is still what staff is anticipating. Do we think that we're at the bottom and we're going to see a turnaround? Or do we not think we're at the bottom yet? I guess that's my first question.
And that's a tough one. So I'm going to give it to Finance Director Dollstrand.
So I don't think we are necessarily at the bottom at this point. I don't know that we aren't either. It's really going to depend a lot on what happens at the state level and where they go with any sort of tamping down of what people are allowed to do and not do. We will be working on the projections into the next year. The October 14th report, when we originally set that up, only looked at the first six months in detail and it grouped the last six months because in all honesty, we thought at this point, we'd be through with all of that or at least far enough along that, that we wouldn't need to look in detail at those pieces. That's obviously not the case anymore. As we move ahead now, we will be changing those projections to look more at the next six months to reflect those in the COVID update, which is that October 14th one. And we'll be looking at those individual months as opposed to having them in a group as we do right now. I wish I knew exactly where we would be in those six months and nobody does. So it'll be our goal to project into those next six months in our next update to have a better idea of where we might have had at that point. The administrator and I discuss this regularly and we will also be reaching out for some outside assistance to be able to come and help with those types of projections to help us get a better handle on where we're headed for the remainder of this fiscal year and on into the next fiscal year as well. We don't know where we'll be yet, but we do hope on, we do plan on being able to provide a better outlook as we move ahead. John, do you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, Kevin. Finance Director Coakley?
Yes, thank you. I would agree with everything Kevin just said. The, the last six months of the fiscal year though, those out months, which now are not out months anymore because they're approaching fast or they're here. We have adjusted those as we're going along. The, I think we started exactly as Kevin said, but it's been a real incremental approach the last few months as we got actual data from the pandemic. I guess the period of COVID here. So we had actual receipts from the downturn and the reopening as we got into a store Illinois Phase Four so that there was more things open. Looking ahead, it's going to be imprecise no matter what we do. We are, Kevin is right on. We are talking to some outside folks to try to get some other ideas from other places. We don't have all the answers here. Nobody does, but the more heads we put into that, the better. And we are also paying close attention to economic factors whenever we can get into a webinar session, seminar on the outlooks from economists and other folks. We're listening to them. Now, those are regional. Sometimes they're national and national doesn't have a lot of bearing on Warrenville. It's a nice benchmark. Regional factors though, Chicago area, metro area are helpful. And there is at least some projections that it will be a slow, very slow, steady increase. We know that this is not a V-shaped recovery. That's very clear by now. But we think, Alderman, to your question directly, that it will continue using the very unscientific term of slogging along for a while yet. You can see the high point so too is the highlights. Income tax is a variable beyond our control, but some things that were more locally related, the state shared sale tax, the home roll sales tax because of the essential services designation for stores and businesses that we have. Walgreens, Family Foods, Target, basically, those have been doing well during the the downturn and seem to be continuing. Restaurants are having some comeback. We hope that they continue into the bad weather. Some of that was being able to have outdoor seating, but they still have delivery takeout and should be able to continue if we can control this increases to have some indoor seating as well. So they are hanging on and doing some things, as you'll see. And we do forget to mention, and Kevin did mention, thank you, Thorntons is open and reducing revenue, not just gasoline tax locally, but also they will be generating sales tax as well as Culvers across the street from them. We have a new restaurant, which is very fortunate timing. We don't have numbers on them yet because of the delay and remittances, but we will be getting food and beverage tax as well as sales tax from them as well. So those won't make up all the difference, but they certainly will help. I hope that answered those, some of those questions. We're still working on the future though.
Thank you, John. Back to you, Alderman.
Thank you. Yes, I always see long lines of people at Culvers and I think that it looks to me just anecdotally like they're doing very well. And as a one-time boost to our food and beverage tax, it couldn't have come at a better time. So that's great. My next sort of big picture question about this ongoing update report is that in the weekly report that we get from you, you do sometimes give us updates on additional resources that are available to us as part of the pandemic relief availability. But I don't see that here. Maybe that would be a good place to include it so that we can see the bigger picture. I know that some of them are resources that are very constrained. The county, which is administering the CARES Act funding, and I know that there was one in the report this week about the IPRF stimulus grant. I know it's only $3,700, but are there any strings attached to that? Rules on how we can use it?
City Administrator Coakley?
Thank you. The IPRF The IPRF, I got that right, that $3,600, $3,700, there's no strings on that, so we can use that as, as is needed. Regarding the other funding, thank you for mentioning that. I, I should have, I didn't bring my notes with me tonight. We will be getting an update to the council probably through the week to report, but it might be shown as a revenue in next month, I hope. We have submitted some of the city's COVID-related expenses for CARES Act funding. Kevin, I've read that number so many times, I can't remember. There is 680-some-odd thousand that has been allocated for Warrenville on a per capita basis. We will, based on the US government interpretations and the county's acceptance of those, we will be eligible to get our full reimbursement, but we have to submit receipts. Kevin, if you can tell us, we don't have the money yet, so we didn't report it as revenue at, yet. There's a lot of level, levels of review and approval that have to go through the county, and ultimately, the county board has to approve the, the payment, but we do anticipate getting... Kevin, what's the amount that was submitted so far?
So let me hit it all in one swoop here. The full amount that we are eligible for at this point is almost $683,000. The amount we've submitted for so far have received only a preliminary approval on it, not final approval yet, is a little over $408,000. So as soon as we receive final approval and, and when we actually receive that, then we will be updating the council, because by the time we actually receive it, we do know we have it. Right now, it's, right now, there's still a question on that.
Thank you. If I could just finish with that thought, too. That money is to cover expenses that are eligible under the, the CARES Act, the COVID relief funding. Don't ask me the exact acronym of a federal act. And so we will meet those criteria and get that funding. That will help offset extra expenses, and in some ways, it will help offset some of our losses, but it cannot be tied to revenue losses, so will not make up for the revenue losses that we have, but it certainly helps. It helps to cover our expenses of all the extra expenses we've had. It helps cover some of the public safety, police payroll time that we had, that was certainly, they are up there exposed all the time to all the public and COVID exposure, and it will help cover some of the other costs that we've incurred. So that is a very positive thing and a good, a good thing. We will get to those dollars and let you know as soon as we get the confirmation or actually when we get the payment from the county.
Okay, thank you. Back to you, Alderman.
Yes, I mean, I saw in the weekly report when the preliminary approval for, I believe it was public safety staff time was received from the county, and that is tremendously encouraging, because I know there was some question about that, and we needed the county to determine the eligibility. That's a very large portion of our claimed funds from the county, so it made a very big difference to our budget. I mean, if you talk about $400,000 out of, compared to a $2 million loss presented in this update, then that's, you know, 20% of the amount, and that's not nothing. I mean, you're still losing 80% possibly, but that's, that's not enough. And then additional money for the air exchange project and so on. So it's not, it's not enough to, I suppose, make the city whole under these circumstances, but it helps, every little bit helps. I guess my, my only other question for you, I guess for you both. One of the things we've been talking about this whole time is how we're doing compared to what our projections are. I guess I would like to see more information in here about what, how we're doing compared to the budget. You know, when it, when it says in, in a report, I find this very confusing, when it says in a report that, you know, the anticipated collection rate is 50%, and we've got 60% or whatever, and it's a 10% difference. Well, it's not exactly a 10% difference. That's, you know, 10% out of 50% is 20% or whatever the case might be. And sometimes when you're talking about smaller numbers, it looks like 3%, and it's really 90%. So it can be very hard to, to follow when you have a year-to-date update. And I guess, again, I'm talking more about the October 10th memo than the October 14th memo, where you're talking about the changes in revenues so far. So I guess my, my broader question is just, can this be presented in some somewhat more clearer English way? You know, remittances that are realized versus expected? I don't feel like that's communicating very well, and it's just, is it my imagination or is it just cleaner to say, you know, we're not getting 90% of the amusement tax? I hope that my question is slightly clear, because what I'm talking about is not clear to me, so I think my question about it is probably not very clear.
Hey, Kevin, would you like to chime in?
Well, let me start, and the Administrator can correct where I'm wrong. The two reports aren't exactly showing the same exact data, meaning the October 14th memo is looking at things on a cash basis. We don't normally deal with a cash basis in the accounting world. We have to de, deal with accrual. The October 10th is where that accrual accounting plays into this. We're dealing with a, a, the same set of numbers, but looked at from a different way. So the, the October 10th, could we revamp that to do that on a cash basis? In all honesty, that's going to be a little hard to do, because there's a lot more information in there that we would have to convert the way we account versus the way we're trying to report this. So that would be a little bit harder to do, probably actually a lot harder to do. So I think that's where a little bit of the confusion is, we're reporting in the October 14th memo on a cash basis. We are looking at, in the October 10th memo, a strictly a financial update on the current fiscal year that we're in. And you notice, there aren't even any projections in there yet. We, we, we haven't started to incorporate those into that. That will be a thing that we will be doing, doing in upcoming updates as well. So I think we're, we're, we're looking at the same thing in two different ways.
Thank you, Kevin. City Administrator Cokely.
Thank you. My answer is, I'm not sure. We'll, we'll give it some thought to see if there's a way to make it easier to understand and follow. And Alderman, you're looking for budget to, I guess, current comparisons. Kevin pointed out some important factors, because at the end of the day, he and his staff have to do all this work, no matter what I want to, what I ask them for, they always have to try to figure out how to put this together. I will finish, though, with, this is one of the reasons Kevin and I are going to be talking to somebody who is a recently retired finance director, see if we can get some advice from that person. Somebody who's done some, has worked for a few communities and done some consulting work, and probably has some other ways to present things that they have deployed, and see if we can make some improvements to that, as well as when we do the budget presentation, too, like to pick the brain of other people, because you might like the way, or you may not like the way, that Kevin or Kevin and I are presenting things, but we don't have all the answers, and sometimes an outside and fresh perspective, looking at the way we do things can be helpful. So I can commit to that. We will see if we can get some better ideas to help improve that. That noted, too, is Kevin will remind me regularly, is what I was saying, is no matter what I ask for, it takes a lot of work sometimes to make those changes. So we will look at it, see if we can make it meet some of those needs. It might not be able to be done in the next four weeks, but let's see, let's see first what we can, what we come up with. We'll, we'll take that under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I hope you understand what it is that I'm asking. I, I understand that it's very easy for, for someone who's reading a table that says, okay, we wanted, you know, 33.33% of the hotel tax to be remitted by now, but it's only 13%. To say, okay, that looks like a 20% difference, you take 33, you subtract 13, that's 20% difference, but it's not. It's two-thirds of it is missing. So I, I hope that what I'm asking about is clear, because those are, those are two very different ways of looking at the same thing, I think. And one is just explaining what it is, maybe. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kreschel, any additional comments or questions?
Thank you. Nope, no, no questions, just soaking it all in, and I think, you know, this is one of the reports that I appreciate getting when we do. It's something I, I wouldn't say enjoy, but I appreciate the transparency on everything that's going on. I would like to comment that I'm, you know, particularly proud of the, you know, page four and five here, that it's, it's one thing to understand that we have, you know, a situation that we're, we're dealing with, but I think it's also important to know that, you know, we have a plan and we're, we're doing things, you know, as a, as a city that, that helped this problem along. So, you know, there's a page and a half of things here, that there's things outside of our control, but, but these are things that, that we're doing proactively to, to make the situation as best as we can. So I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Widener.
Thank you, Mayor. Don't have any questions. I do appreciate all the sacrificing that's going on with the decisions that staff is making on a lot of the equipment and capital projects that were forecasted for this fiscal year. And you see those improvements when we meet. As a staff, I'm sure they got excited about those improvements and getting new vehicles and getting the new doors and so forth. And I know it's hard to put those aside for another year, but appreciate the effort and the cutbacks. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. And Alderman Wilson.
Now, I have no additional questions. I really appreciate all the information that we're getting. You know, it's, it's difficult to look into a crystal ball and try to figure out what's happening next, but, so thank you very much for the breakdown that you do have, and we know we'll keep us up to date as, whenever you can. Thanks again.
Thank you, Alderman. Yeah, I, I guess the bottom line is, we are all in uncharted territory, and it's very, very difficult to make projections on something we have not experienced in the past. So the prudence that staff has shown in supporting, cutting back spending wherever possible, and the elected officials support the staff, I think we're doing a fine job of anticipating whatever we can anticipate fiscally in making sure that we don't overextend ourselves too early, because who knows what the next year is going to bring for us. So all we can do, basically, is deal with what we're given and be as prudent as possible with our spending, which I think we are doing. Administrator, Administrator Cokely.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for all the feedback. We take that to heart, we listen, and I think you know that, but we will, we will see what we can do to even make it better and do our best. I, I am listening to you all, though, and I'm feeling, I have missed some things I should be saying. It's been a couple of months since I've commented. I want to express appreciation to the council for all their support through all of this, but also to all of the city staff. What, what you don't see every day is the phenomenal creativity and flexibility and dedication they're doing. So remember, they're not getting raises this year, now that we're all happy we have jobs. Looking around at what's going on in the world, no doubt that everybody to a person is appreciative of the fact that they have a place to work and, and a secure place to work at this point. But they're doing a lot more in cases, they've been very creative. You've heard about some things, just a few months back, doing all the inspections remotely by video, instead of having to go into places where there's a risk to the person going out, the inspector into the public. But there's just things all over the place like that, with what the police do every day, public works, our inspectors, the people in the, in the city offices now sitting behind plexi, little sheets of plexiglass windows to work with the public, and the citizens in the public have also been phenomenally understanding and, and helpful through all of this that we're going through. And I realize that just needs to be said sometimes, and I think all the way around. I certainly appreciate it, and I think everyone does. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We'll move on, then, to the balance of our agenda for this evening. We have nothing under unfinished business. We have no new business listed, but we do have the need for a closed session this evening. So if I could have the citation and the motion, please, Alderman Berry.
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of 5 ILCS 120/2 paren C paren two, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. And 5 ILCS 120/2 paren C paren one, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body, to determine its validity.
Second, Alderman Bavir.
We have a motion in a second to go into closed session. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries. We will now enter into closed session. We will not be conducting any business after the closed session, but anyone wishing to stay on the call, they do so until the meeting has officially ended. Thank you for your attention this evening.